This episode is sponsored by the Cornell SC Johnson College of Business. The Cornell Executive MBA Americas Program is designed for goal achievers from any industry. The program works by advancing your career without interruption, by providing global perspectives and intimate classroom settings, and by challenging, informing, connecting, and propelling you. Achieve your goals with the Cornell Executive MBA Americas Program on the weekend and close to home. Search Cornell EMB Americas in my city today. Welcome to the Elevate Podcast, conversations with women changing the face of business. Hi, everybody. Welcome back to the Elevate Podcast History Maker Series. I am so, so excited because I just finished the interview, I mean, literally like two minutes ago. Today's interview is with Dina Nina Martinez-Rutherford. She is the first trans woman elected to the Madison City Council. We talk about pride, we talk about what's going on in the LGBTQ community right now across the nation. We talk about her journey. She ventured from stand-up comedy into politics, which is just so fascinating to me. We talk about mental health. And it's just, it's such a good interview. She was another one of those where I could have talked to her for like three hours. Don't be surprised if you hear her back on the podcast eventually. But just absolutely fabulous, so, so good. So let's go ahead and get to the interview now. I'm so excited. This coincidentally is aligning with Pride Month, but I would have had her on no matter what. As you all know, happy, happy Pride Month to all my fellow members of the LGBTQ community and to our guest today. Today, our guest is Dina Nina Martinez-Rutherford, best name ever. And welcome, you are the first ever trans woman elected to Madison City Council.
Yes.
Amazing.
Isn't that so exciting?
It's, it's such a light in the, the world that the LGBTQ community, I'm sure, as you know, I'm sure better than anyone else, but particularly our trans brothers and sisters and have experienced kind of an unprecedented wave of vitriol their way in the past year. And so when I see these, you know, moments of like hope, they, they just mean the world.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, we, we have been experiencing quite a, you know, a bit of contention against our, uh, community. And raising the trans flag this week, I, it was such an honor to raise it over our city for the first time. And to know that we are, there's representation for us. And I say this all the time, representation doesn't only matter, it literally saves lives. When people have someone that they can look to, uh, that represents who they are and how they show up in the world. It's a magical thing.
Yeah. It's, I, I, yeah, we, we're actually coming off a few pieces of good news, you know? I know, obviously, drag and being trans are very different, but there's a lot of, uh, trans people in the drag community. And, you know, the recent, uh, finding of the drag, Tennessee's drag ban to be unconstitutional. You know, it feels like this Pride Month, they're like, let's give you some reprieve.
You know, thank goodness. Give us a second to breathe.
I know. I'm just like, come on, give us this month.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So, and I do have to say, I tell this, um, to all of my trans friends. Um, so I'm a cis bi woman, um, so I of course love the bi flag, but I'm so jealous because I think the trans flag is the prettiest of all of the, the flags. And so like whenever I see it, I'm like, dang it, it's the prettiest flag, uh, cause I just love pastels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't wear a lot of them, but I do love them.
Yes, there is just, it's so pretty. People are like, oh, what's that flag? And I'm like, it's the trans flag. It's the pretty one. I know.
It's great, you know, like, um, uh, I think that, and it, and it so perfectly symbolizes who we are and how we show up in the world. And, and society tells us, you know, males are blue, females are pink, you know? And, and seeing that mix of who we are and how we show up is just, it, it's beautiful. And, and I know when I see that, I'm gonna feel safe and I'm gonna have people I can talk to. And I'm not gonna have to contend with the vitriol as much, you know? Like when I see that flag, I know that I'm, you know, somebody cares about me.
Yes, a hundred percent. Yeah, I, I, well, get, uh, I, I live in Texas, um, which as I think everybody knows, is not the greatest state for LGBTQ or trans representation in general. But when I see, especially in Texas, you know, a, a business flying that flag, it means the world. Cause it's like, they're like, we stand with you no matter what our stupid governor says.
Oh, that guy.
So, don't even get me started on Texas politics.
I mean, as someone who grew up in Texas, you know, I, I hear the stories from my friends that are on the ground there, you know? One of my friends is a therapist and works with, uh, families and trans individuals. And the trauma that's being inflicted upon transgender people and their families in Texas is so disheartening. And I'm so grateful that there are people like you and that there are, you know, people like my friend who works with them. And, and I'm so grateful that there are people showing up for Texans and saying, you matter. And no matter what everyone else is saying, we're here in your court. I mean, that's profound, you know? It's hard and it's deplorable, the way that trans individuals are treated there right now. And, and it's not just solely a Texas issue as we see, you know, Florida, uh, Tennessee, Arkansas, you know? Five hundred and last count, I think it was 549 anti-trans bills have been introduced into legislatures all over the country. Forty-nine states have put forth measures that restrict, um, trans people and access to healthcare. And, um, you know, gender-affirming care that literally saves people's lives, that doctors have proven and studied and know that this works for people to make their lives better. Yet we're not looking at science, we're not looking, we're not looking at the relationship between doctor and patient. We are saying as politicians, we're gonna get all up in your healthcare and your junk and, and we're gonna make decisions for you, which.
Yeah. And as we saw from the, you know, fall of Roe v. Wade, it always goes really well when, when politicians get up in your healthcare.
It does, it does.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to work on a, on a tour of Texas that'll be like comedy storytelling and a political aspect to, um, to support the community and raise money for, uh, organizations that are on ground doing the hard work. So once that's, once that's in play and ready, I will let you know.
Oh, I will be there.
Yay.
Yes, yes, a hundred percent. Um, I'm so there, but you wanna talk about doing the work. Like this is not, A, this is not about me, this is about you. And so I wanna talk today about you. And so as we mentioned, uh, she became the first trans woman elected to Madison City Council. I believe the first trans woman elected to any position in Madison, correct?
In Madison, open trans woman elected, yes, in Madison.
Yes. Well, huge congratulations. That's just incredible. Um, I wanna ask you, you mentioned stand-up comedy, um, which our listeners might not know about. Um, how do you wanna walk our listeners through kind of your journey into politics and through stand-up comedy? And just, you know, how you got to where you are today? Cause I think it's such an interesting story.
Yeah, well, let's, let's start with, uh, Texas. I, I grew up in Texas and I was there for a good portion of my life and, and never felt like I had the space to become myself. So I did what most of us do, we moved to a big city. I ended up in Los Angeles and I felt like that was enough space away from my family that I could kind of have my own voice and, and not rely on, uh, my family's perspective to become who I am. And, you know, that was 2007, 2007, there was very little depiction, there was, there was little depiction, if any, of trans people in the mainstream media that was positive. And as an entertainer, actor, performer, I felt like it was important for me to find a space that worked for me and to move through the world as authentically and openly as possible. And I was a showgirl for a while and that just didn't feel, it didn't feel like me, if that makes sense. And I also was faced with a depiction of what a female experience is from the media and from the cis drag culture, which is, is beautiful and amazing in so many ways, but it just didn't feel like me, you know? So I found stand-up comedy and I love it. I've, I've loved it forever. And then looking back at my life, you know, seeing people like Whoopi Goldberg and Joan Collins, Joan Collins, Joan Rivers. And I do love Joan Collins though, I'm not gonna lie. Give me a slap, please. And then kind of looking at my journey, I've always kind of been funny-ish. And then I started doing stand-up and I was like, I love this. And then I ended up moving to Madison, Wisconsin. And there was something about moving from a big city to a smaller city that I was able to meet people and cultivate community in a way that I never had it before. And, you know, we're always like, I'm coming from a coast, like what's gonna happen in the middle of the country? I'm, I'm either gonna get murdered or married, right? And luckily neither one have, uh, transpired. But I, and, and being here and watching how hard it is for trans, queer, and non-binary, gender expansive community to find their voice and find a space in, uh, civil discourse, like it's just so, it's, it's hard. There's a huge barrier to entry, um, when it comes to money, when it comes to visibility, social capital. Luckily, I'd worked really hard to create, cultivate a lot of relationships in, in Madison. And, and now I'm getting even more, which is incredible. But after so many years of just, you know, fighting to exist and to, you know, get a hand up and watching what's happening all across our country over the last six years, seven years, was disheartening. And in the fall of 2022, my friends and I got together, cause I used to have a podcast called I Love Funny Women, and we did a lot of political, uh, commentary. And that night we did, the night of the election, we did a live coverage. And my best friend said, did Dina just announce that she's running for office? And I was like, no, 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 darn it, now I have to. So I just kind of stumbled into it from that perspective of, I, I need to take up space, not for me, although I love it, you know? But, but I need to take up space for the children in my district and our city that are being told that they're not worth anything because they're queer, trans, gender expansive, you know?
If I had as a teenager seen somebody on TV that said, I'm attracted to all genders and that's okay, that would have meant the world. And I just, oh.
Oh, thank you. Like I, I, I'm so happy that I can be me. Like, you know, talking about Texas, you know, I came from a very evangelical Christian background. I, you know, the hurdles of getting through religious trauma and being told over and over from, from the pulpit, from your family, from your neighbors, that you don't deserve to live a life that corresponds to who you are is horrible. And I, I, every time I hear this, especially Christian nationalist narrative, I'm like, did y'all read the book at all? Did you, did you read it? Like, you know, and I have these conversations with my mom, who just doesn't understand anything outside of, of where she lives. And, and I get that, there's, there's a lot of privilege in that and a lot, you know, it's great that she can live her life without that, that, um, that extra tension, you know? But when it comes down to it and we, if we look at that book, you know, Jesus, and you look at who, who your religion's based on, that dude was so radical, like he was like hanging out with people like me. And, and it was against the, the rules, you know? Like he could have been quote unquote excommunicated. But, but he spent time with us because he knows, he knew that there is value in every human being and that God created us, whether you believe in God or not, you know? We are created to have this beautiful experience in community. Um, and then, and leave a better, better world for, for those people who are experiencing that, that marginalization. And we've gotten so far away from having empathy and compassion that we just wanna engage in, um, you know, anger politics and, and politics out of fear. And, and I understand that as somebody who experiences threats, you know? Like it, it, it's scary. I also knew what I was coming into and I, I'm a white person, so I have a lot of privilege and I'm able to move through the world with a lot of cis privilege. Like when, when I travel to Texas through, through all of the, the states that hate us, I don't feel threatened just by walking up to get gas and to go get a snack out of the convenience store, you know? And I realize how privileged I am and grateful I am to be able to move through the world pretty seamlessly. But a lot of us aren't able to do that. And, and that's where I have to be me and vocal and say, look, no matter who we are, and, and it's shocking how many times I have to say this, we are just, I'm a human being, you know? Like I am a person, flesh and blood, trying to have a life that is, is, you know, like I just wanna take care of my responsibilities and take care of my loved ones and, and spoil my dog to death, you know? Like, I want the same thing as everybody else. I wanna be able to go into a restroom and use the restroom like anyone else. I'm a human, I have bodily functions, you know? And, and going into a restroom is scary for us because we don't know what we're facing when we go into that restroom.
Yeah. And just the idea to me of policing restrooms is so absurd.
Yeah.
It's, first of all, it's just, what do people think is happening in there is my question.
I know, I know. And, and what they think is happening in there is not substantiated in facts at all.
Never.
At all.
Ever.
At all. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's ludicrous. Like, you know, when I go to Buc-E's, I'm, you know?
Yes.
I'm like, I'm not going to, I can't talk while I'm in here. I can't say anything. If I'm in the stall, I can't clear my throat. Like these are the things that I have to think about when just going to the restroom. And a lot of us hold it until we can't hold it anymore to avoid any interaction in there. And it's just ridiculous. Also, let's talk about stalls in, in the United States. How insanely bad planning were the stall structures in our country, like?
And wildly different.
Yes. Yes.
Like what, can we figure out what a bathroom looks like in the United States, please?
Yes, yes, amen. Single stalls that have a door that ensures privacy, like come on.
I don't know why it's that difficult.
At all.
Yeah, it's, I don't know why we have to have like a weird little gap with the, uh, at your feet and a weird little gap at your head. And like, I'm like, what is this?
And all these gaps in the side, do you know, like, I'm always wondering if anybody's gonna sneak by and see me do my business. And that is not, that is not okay. Come on.
I remember the first time I ever went into a bathroom that was like multi-stall, but they were actually enclosed, full enclosed spaces. And I was like, this is so much more private than anything I've ever seen. Why can't we all just do this?
Yeah, totally. And then you don't have as much of a fear of people, you know, being predators and taking your child, you know, from, or, you know? It's just, it's ludicrous.
Yeah, they, they, uh, it's just absurd. But I did, I did shout because you said Buc-E's.
Yes, I know. I'm obsessed. They're talking about getting us one up here near, near Madison. And I'm just like, y'all don't even know, y'all have no clue, you don't know.
For anybody who is not like a Texas native, or I guess they have them in other places too. But like Buc-E's is like the Disney world of, of.
Convenience stores, yes.
They have like 30 billion gas station, like center, like hookups. And then just, you go into the convenience store, which is basically a mall, and it is everything in the world you could possibly want.
I might be a consumer, like a connoisseur of convenience stores and rest stops. So Buc-E's is like top tier.
It is. I did not think I would be talking about Buc-E's today and I'm so glad I came up.
I am too.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll wear my Buc-E's shirt out here and people will be like, oh my God, oh my God. And I'm like, yes, let's bond over Buc-E's.
Yes, people get so excited and it's completely valid.
Yeah.
That was like one of the things that I got, cause I didn't have a Buc-E's in New York. And so like when I moved home, I was like, I can go to Buc-E's.
Yes, right?
Also their food is good.
Oh God, yes. And they have everything.
Yes. You go in there like, here's the burrito counter, here's this, here's the fresh fruit, here's the, and you're like, this is a convenience store?
Yeah. Although I really, like my major focus for anything is Diet Dr. Pepper. Let me get to that Diet Dr. Pepper.
See, I'm trying to get to the cranberry juice.
This is about politics, that's what I'm.
Yeah. Yeah. It's.
Yeah, I love a Buc-E's and, I mean, there's so many things about Texas that I love, but we, we've just gotta do better. You know, we've gotta, let, let's talk about Texas hospitality. Why, why are we being so hostile and not focusing on caring for each other? That's what, and that's all across the country.
Yeah, it's, it's astonishing that like, especially in, you know, the Southwest, the Midwest, it's some of the nicest people you'll ever see. They just don't know.
Yeah.
They just don't understand. And I'm like, and it's, in every other way, you're such a kind person, but.
Yeah. And that was one of the things for me on the campaign trail, cause you know, it's scary. I'm a, I'm a trans woman. Granted, like Madison is a lot like Austin, you know? We're, we're super liberal. My district was 75% Democrat, you know? So I, every time I went to a door and I knew that I said trans and like, I could, I could leave that house knowing that if they've never met a trans person before today, today they have.
Exactly. And I, and I tell that to people all the time too, something like that of whenever people say to me, well, I've never met a gay person or I've never met a trans person, I always say, yes, you do, yes, or yes, you have, you just don't know it.
Right, right.
Because it's, it's not something that everybody announces. And so I just give you all the kudos, you know, to go door to door and announce that. And I'm just.
I was like, I have to be obnoxiously trans now.
Yes.
No more hiding and blending in as much, but.
Yeah.
And it's, and there is like, there's a lot of danger. So I understand and totally respect trans people who are like, I would never run for office because it's scary how seen I am, you know? And, and going into this, I knew what, like, I knew a lot of the things that I was going to be in for, you know? I've gotten emails, I, you know, people don't like me showing up as me and I get that. But there are a heck of a lot of people who do. And there are a heck of a lot of people who need to have that presence there.
Yeah, a hundred percent. I, I could not agree more. I, I wanna dive into, before we get to the final question, cause somehow we're already creeping up on time.
How, how?
I know, I could talk to you forever. Um, but, uh, so one thing I wanna ask, I know, uh, you're very outspoken about mental health awareness.
Yeah.
And so I can't help but think of that, you know, when you're out there bravely, you know, essentially coming out to people day in and day out.
At every door.
Yes, oh.
Hi, I'm trans.
Yeah. It's like the beginning of the show Book of Mormon that, hello.
Yes.
Oh, I would love that. But yeah, so how, you know, what are some things that you've learned that help you cope with it? Or, you know, might help another person, um, who might be struggling with the toll of coming out over and over again as, as our community often has to do.
Right. You know, I think it's, um, stay in relationships, stay in connection. That sounded so churchy. But stay in connection with your friends, be as open and vulnerable as possible with the people you can trust so that you can replenish your energy reserves and go forward. I mean, you know, it's, it, being a public person is hard. Being a queer person who's public is, is very hard. And there's a lot of negativity. People, you know, people will send you emails and say things that they would have never said to anyone in person. Um, and if they did say those things in person, that would be even scarier. But, but all I can do is show up with as much courage and, uh, respect for the other people around me as possible. And, and do the work of the people and do the work of, of advocating for those who need it most.
Agreed. Yeah, just, uh, tuning people out cannot, is not the easiest thing, but when you can do it, it's just, it's so necessary.
Yeah. And I have these people in my life that I can say anything to and just unload on. And they'll be like, we love you, we see you, what do you need, you know?
Yes.
And I could not do, I could not have done this, I could not have gotten to where I've gotten without those people and without the support of everyone in my community. You know, like, it's not easy. I ran against somebody who had long ties and roots to the city of Madison and the neighborhood. You know, I ran against somebody who had a lot of social capital, you know? And I'm just grateful that the, the people of the district were like, yeah, we want something. We want someone a little bit different, you know?
Yeah. And I think that's the thing to remember at the end of the day, you know, even when as loud as those trolls can be, the people picked you.
Yeah.
They came together and they picked you. And I'm so glad that they did.
Thank you, me too.
And not just because that means you get to be on the podcast, just cause I'm.
Exactly, exactly. And, and yes, I have, I love, you know, being a little more public. I, it's something that really energizes me and makes me happy. But also like, I'm doing this not just for me, I'm doing this for my community and the people that need to see one trans person, you know, who's at the table.
Yes.
It's scary.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's, I cannot imagine.
Every day it's scary. I'm like, wow, you, you listen to me now.
I know, they're like, oh, my voice is, is, it matters now.
Yeah, I've told dirty jokes for 15 years, now I'm nervous.
I love that politics is more orysome than skinned up stand-up comedy, which I've heard is like the scariest thing you can do.
I mean, for me, I love it. I find it like, it's, there is something about being able to tell your story and be you on stage that is just so fun and making people laugh, like, and, and, you know, hopefully talking to people and inspiring them and doing trainings about gender identity. And, you know, that, I love it because I'm not talking only for me, I'm talking for everyone in our community.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm a dork.
And, yeah, that, you are not, but also dorks are awesome.
Yeah.
Um, as a self-identified dork, I can, it does. But so as we are. Yes. Just the whole community of dorks.
Yes.
Yes. Um, so unfortunately, we're at time, but I do have to end with a question I ask all of our history makers, which, um, I always preface this by saying that we are obviously all standing on the shoulders of history makers before us.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, we're able to get to where we are thanks to others who paved the way before. So I always like to ask, who is a history maker who inspired you?
I mean, Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Angela Jenkins in Minneapolis, Ms. Majors, you know? Like the list is endless. But that's all I can come up with right now, so it's ending.
I could every single one of them and names that we should all know.
Absolutely. Our history.
Yeah, our history and just American history, as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, our history and just American history, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, right?
Yeah.
I think all those people I named were Americans, so come on.
I, yeah, come on. Let's, let's get to know.
Exactly. Exactly. Love more, worry less, be scared less. Have compassion, you know?
I don't have anything better to end on than that, so.
Boom.
Yeah, boom, mic drop. Thank you so much for coming on the podcast today. It's been just an absolute delight. The fastest thirty minutes of my life, I think. Um, but yeah, absolutely, absolute blast. And thank you for everything you're doing in the community. And, uh, I think that our podcast listeners will definitely be watching you in the future.
Awesome. And I can't wait to come to Texas and see you all.
Yes, and I'll be there.
Yay.
I'll be the one that's, I'll be the one that's jealously looking at the trans flag like it's so pretty.
I'm just wearing trans flags, that's all I'm doing.
Yeah. Yeah, you're just like looking for, you're like, who's the one? Oh, that one right there, that's her.
Yes.
All right. I also think the bi flag is really pretty. It's like my second favorite of the flags. I don't wanna get yelled at by my community, but like.
Hey, guys, we love all the flags. We're, we're, we're flag-inclusive.
Yeah, we're flag, they're all beautiful.
But come on, the pink and blue are just, you know, chef's kiss.
So good. Yeah. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Elevate Network drives real results for ambitious women trying to break through the glass ceiling and achieve success in their careers. We offer a platform full of resources and opportunities for growth, all designed to help you unlock your potential. With Elevate's support, you can take the first step toward achieving your professional goals. With supportive community and tangible resources at your fingertips, you're only one step away from reaching your fullest potential. Join us today and take advantage of our thirty-day free trial to start building the career of your dreams. Thanks so much for listening to the Elevate Podcast. If you like what you hear, you can subscribe, give us five stars and share your review. You can learn all about Elevate membership and all the great things that Elevate Network is doing at our website, www.elevatenetwork.com. That's E L L E V A T E network dot com. And special thanks to our producer, Catherine Heller. She rocks. Thanks so much and join us next week.